... This is Bob, Mark, and Joe Hunter. Built this, designed it. It is just in the state. We got some other items that we're getting out of the long play. But it's a way to get out forward to the community about how it's doing. Dr. Roder mentioned the school play. Representatives from the board were here on hand, agreed people as they can get. We developed a tricycle or shorts, landing on the place of our mission as a doll. And we're handing those out in all forms of the play. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we went through the process of executive director interview. We are hoping to make the offer this week to the chairman of it. Frank, you, this theater is our representative on the board for this process. He had Bob New did telephone interviews and made recommendations to the board for two candidates to invite in to do the interview. The board met with the candidates a week ago. And I still did do reference checks as well. And we're in the process now later this week of offering the position. That is updated while we're doing it. Anybody have any questions about that?
It's my understanding that one of the things we need to take care of tonight is some sort of formal authorization of funding the foundation with additional funds for the executive director position. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So the board had authorized last year fifty thousand dollars as a loan to the foundation that we could pay back over time. We did forward some of those monies to contract with Bob New to get them up and running. Now the foundation needs the additional funds. How much do you need?
Twenty-five.
The offer this time that they had made me aware of is twenty-five thousand. We can certainly work out release of that pending, you know, whatever contract we-
How much did we already give him, Mr.? I think it was ten.
I just wanted to make sure that-
Nine.
Nine thousand was-
So we're not exceeding that originally?
No, 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 no.
No.
I just, when I discussed the matter with Mr. Subers, as a matter of really proper protocol, I don't have the authority without the board to release that kind of money. So it has to come from the board action.
Release it in payments if you needed all at one time, or?
We were, we can work out those details. We were thinking of maybe half and half as, as the year goes along because that's considered to be a total twelve-month salary for that position. So we can work out those details. I just, I can't release money without board approval.
So are there any objections from the board? Okay, so seeing none, you have the board's approval to go ahead and release those funds?
Okay.
As you and the solicitor Dean fit.
I think he said we would eventually need a resolution to do it, but we can proceed and that would allow him to proceed with the candidate.
That way you guys can go ahead and hire your candidate?
Thank you.
Okay?
Here's the twenty-five thousand dollar question, I guess. If I understand the way this works, then the first twenty-five thousand dollars raised, I guess from here on out, his salary comes out of money that the foundation raises, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If, once our twenty-five thousand dollar seed money is gone and very little, if any, money is raised, where does he get paid from? Or is he not around that number?
It would obviously leave him without the power to do that amount of money to pay that. That is, of course, not our goal because the candidates know that as well.
Just for further information on that, we are in the process of drawing up, for lack of a better term, an agreement for the payback schedule of that money. Once we release it, then we'll put the payment schedule together. I'll probably have that in front of finance committee and so the board can see that as well. I've already discussed that matter with Mr. Subers as well.
Could you, could you repeat what you had said? I was trying to take notes, but I may have copied it down. About your fundraiser. Did you say that's May thirtieth?
Yes.
From six to nine?
Thursday evening from six till eight.
Six to eight, six to eight. Two hours on a Thursday night?
Actually, I'll put a plug in for that. That's a family affair. My, my wife has some experience with that, so I asked her if she would be willing to offer her time. So she's going to work with the foundation spearheading that event and she's in the process of putting it together now.
Are we allowed to ask for quarterly financials from them considering we're giving them seed money?
Well, I think we do have a board member that sits on their board.
Okay. I'm just saying though, but I gotta, are they allowed to share that?
Do you ask quarterly updates?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Provide a statement, but we're-
Can we have an idea of how they're doing it?
Provide us with an update on quarterly basis then. I mean, if we look on our voting meeting, we have, we have another item and, you know, put every three months, just put it for entities like we do with the student government report as a reminder.
Well, again, I wish them well, but I mean, we just want to make sure, yeah, they're doing it right this year, that's all.
That's a good idea.
As I said, I've, I've been able to attend their meetings. A lot of things are happening very quickly and we're excited about having this, this signature, right, I wouldn't call it a signature, but this kickoff event down at Spring Hollow. We looked around, there were just, we need a place big enough to be able to do it. We had looked at the Reading Country Club and then also at Spring Hollow. We're trying to maximize our profit. Spring Hollow was nice enough to give us a little bit of, you know, leeway with, with the arrangement that we worked out with them. So they're kind of making an in-kind donation as well to keeping the price as low as possible for us to have the event. We're looking to get as many people, I mean, we're looking at about a hundred, hopefully. If we can get a hundred and fifty, that would be fantastic. So we'll begin an advertising campaign for that event and you'll be hearing a lot about it.
Is it just too difficult to get it on a Friday or Saturday night? What, why a Thursday? You're, I'm not, I mean, it's your-
I think the more you go on a weekend, the more expensive it gets. And we try to get it as close to the weekend as possible and, and get some open dates. Frankly, with the short turnaround time that we had too, it's tough to get a space-
Right.
Like for that size event with that short notice. So we were actually very, I'm, we have been very grateful that Spring Hollow was able to work with us. And we're excited, we're gonna make it work, so.
Great, glad to hear it.
Where's your marketing campaign though? What are they gonna focus on, like what groups? Is everybody, like community?
More, frankly, more people with, more adult because they would bring the money. So there's gonna be a rather, I mean, the price hasn't been set exactly yet, but we're looking to have some hors d'oeuvres, an adult kind of event where they would make a donation and then the difference between the donation and the, the cost would be the, the profit margin for the foundation.
I was just thinking, are you gonna do like a, you know, the call? If it begins with the foundation starting?
Yes, yeah, my, I put my wife in charge of all of that. So she's, she's gonna take care of all that and work with the foundation to start blasting it out, advertising it and move forward with a, a plan to get as many people as we can. We've turned over the alumni database, Joe didn't mention that. We've turned that over to the foundation, so they'll begin working with that. Another thing that you didn't mention, Joe, that I want to put a plug in, Mr. Scotty Matts has been named to the foundation. He's the first Daniel Boone alumnus on the foundation board now. So things are starting to move slowly, but steadily toward meeting some goals and getting some things done.
I think when Mr. Sam was linked to that, you did a, a broadcast, phone call.
Oh, yes, we will, we haven't started yet.
Use, use our system.
Oh, we will. We haven't, we haven't started in earnest yet. We just really got the commitment from Spring Hollow less than about a week ago. So now that we have all that in place, we're gonna move forward with getting it advertised. And for all of you out there in the audience, you're gonna be getting a lot of calls and, and mailings.
There will also be a mailing that will be opened out, put down a letter from me introducing the concept and the foundation as well as the invitation. So that in the process of saying we're gonna get that out.
You just said you handed out Blazer Foundation pamphlets this weekend?
Almost a thousand of them.
I was gonna say, I didn't see one. Like, did anyone email it to us or?
I did, I certainly emailed out.
So that we were able to email that on our email list to all the people?
Sure. Absolutely.
Because I, I didn't see it.
Yeah, no, we were here, we had people from the foundation. I was actually helping to hand some of them out yesterday during the play. We printed a thousand and I think there were only maybe a hundred left over. So they're out there, people got them, they, they, I mean, you don't wanna, you know, they're coming really to see the play, but just for awareness.
Yeah, but I think that you've got sports boosters, you've got music boosters, I mean, there's fundraisers, tables, bake sales going on this weekend at Redners. We should put a reel up and let, let, let people know what's going on. I mean, they're gonna benefit from this, so they might as well. I can't speak for them because I'm not a music booster or a sports booster, but one would think that they would want to help if they're gonna benefit from it.
I think what you're hearing from the board, Mr. Resedvich, is that if there's anything that we can do to help promote the foundation, we'd be happy to do that. So if there's a way for us to leverage our, you know, email lists or our own personal contacts, we're willing to do that. I was gonna ask, is the Blazer Foundation linked up on our website, to this new website?
It hasn't been linked to there. They just went live at their website last week. Mr. Matts, where are we with linking that?
I would just put it on the site.
One of the things that we were, we just wanted to make sure it was right before we got it out there live on our site, so.
I would suggest then we go ahead and put a, a page on there linking, not just a tab, but maybe even a page or something describing what the foundation is about and have links from there to their website so we can direct traffic from our site to theirs. I think that would be helpful.
Joe, did you want to introduce any of your other, or I see a couple of other board members here this evening?
No, no, maybe we're in front.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Okay. Well, we appreciate you guys coming tonight and sort of filling us in. Do, are the board members have any other questions or comments?
Thank you for being made aware, we block Blazer Foundation so that, you know, hopefully they're-
It's a good suggestion. I mean, are any Daniel Boone vendors that we, the school does business with being made aware of?
We gathered, I asked, as a matter of fact, one of the things that my wife asked for from me, for, from Mr. Boyer was a copy of all of our businesses in the, in the district. And I forwarded that to her and she's gonna be starting to reach out to them to-
Can we also forward that to the foundation?
They, well, she, she's working for the foundation.
Sorry.
She's not independent, she's working for them.
All right.
I was talking to Mr. Subers again, which is part of, because one of the things Mr. Subers brought up prior to this was sending a flyer like that out to one of our vendors with the expectation of continuing to be a vendor by donating.
Yeah, no, we're not-
And he said there was some legal language that could be put into an acceptance. It's definitely backed on that, so.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense.
I'm just curious, is the website gonna have something on it where people can actually donate directly to the website?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you guys coming tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any board comments on any of the agenda items there and under superintendent's report? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, let's move on to curriculum instruction. Obviously, if you heard us beforehand, we had a meeting scheduled. We were gonna be looking at some block scheduling and other program issues. That meeting has been moved to April third. Mr. Shaheen, I don't know if you have any further comment?
No, it was just, just, we had block scheduling, we were talking about the job course, wanted to see how that worked out. And A, they had to do with any type of program curtailment, one that we were gonna discuss as well.
Okay.
Again, I've reached out to the superintendent and a couple of board members of the school district I came from this, when I went, where I went to school, that had gone to block scheduling. And I just, just, just the same sky school district, same budget, same number of people, different income profile, there's more businesses, but, you know, they went and did that. High school, size, class sizes, three hundred seniors, so they, they were able to put it through and do it with eight periods a day. So I'm just reaching out to try to find out, A, how they did it and B, was there a cost savings or did they just do it because I think they're ranked one hundred and twenty-third school in the country, it's a high school, but they're in the U.S. prison world reporting. So I just wanted to find out if, you know, how they did it, what were the benefits for donating because there's no money savings, there's really no reason to do it unless there's an educational benefit.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, buildings and grounds?
Mr. Potts would have normally been reporting out. I'll take care of that for him tonight. At our last meeting, we had general building updates. There's nothing outstanding to report there, just our routine maintenance and issues in the buildings under item two. Mr. Matts came to our committee meeting to update us on the use of a facilities use form in an electronic format. They were working again today on that, so that's still in the prototype stage, but I just wanted to make the board aware of it. First, we want to start out with a new form and then move that to an electronic process for the completion of the facilities use form. So it's still unfolding and once we move along with that, hopefully by next month, we'll have more to share with you on that.
Are there, before we move on, are there other forms that we could be looking at that we can also put in electronic format?
Sure. I think we've already, what's the, what Mrs. Torsh is nodding her head, I think there's another form we've taken a look at.
It's the access request, also my respect, is to announce, you know, like, why not? We're, we're sampling it through the office and technology, I believe, to, to like, as well, having like our house, you stay with personal cases and so the like.
Can you guys think of anything else, you, as parents, that you fill out that we could put?
There's, there's a lot of yours.
Yeah, we could take a look at them.
Just, just what we do to sign up new students, I mean.
But I think the beginning of the year forecast-
And then we can put it into a workflow.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is any, any form that we have to, we actually have a paper format for that parents have to fill out or administrators need to fill out-
Probably that.
Or teachers need to fill out, that we can put it online and, and have it in a digital format, that it, you fill it out and it automatically gets emailed to wherever it's supposed to go, you know, that's where we should be going here to realize some greater efficiencies.
We are moving in that direction with, um, the next school year and I'm also going to be recommending that we no longer print out the school calendar, um, say that this is, I'm not sure I'll write all the, how high tech, like four thousand, five thousand dollars, where it's possible to print them out, really well, print it out for my, um, for the new school year to have it on the line.
Yeah.
And have some copies for those parents who don't have that access, we'll print it out through our own.
Sure.
Two of the forms that we seem to see the most of are fundraising and field trips, so that would probably be the most fertile ground to move toward those next to move forward with this process.
Most major, or to one hundred companies, about five hundred companies, all do some type of workflow, you know, for central side of sunlight where you never actually print a form, you just go online and it goes in and out of-
Right.
With their secure network, so it's definitely not.
Well, we can use our experience with getting this form electronic to springboarding it to other forms.
Yeah, I just think the sooner the better, you know.
I have included the copies of the teacher handbook and guidelines, things like that, things that have been involved in the past. I, I have included, maybe copies of-
Great. Yeah, that's good news.
How about, how about the course selection guide? High school?
I'm sorry.
The course selection guide for the high school?
It's electronic right now.
Yeah, it's online as well.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that's been electronic.
Guidance, guidance, tab of the high school, it's right there.
If anyone would need to copy any of that out, they could.
What about the forms the students fill out? Is it still paper or can they do that? They have to do that paper, but can they do it electronic?
Right. Well, we can give you a status report on where we are with electronic versus paper.
I think you guys ought to, you know, print out a list of all the darn forms that are out there and, and people have to fill out and, and just start going through them one at a time in terms of the ones that are most used frequently and just let's start checking them off and get them online, get them on the website and have them in a digital format.
I do have something really quickly. I, popped in my mind when I saw, I didn't really think about it too much after that, but if a letter is sent, if a student misses, I forget, a certain number of days, maybe it's eighth, ele-
Consider policy, it's twelve and twenty or something along that.
Yeah, there's, at some point a letter goes out and they include a hard copy of the policy. I don't know if we, do we need to include the hard copy of the policy?
One male letter, I think it would be.
Yeah.
I mean, all it is is if you miss another one, you gotta come and talk to the list or anything.
Yeah, just visit the website if one reads it.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
If you miss a second, then we gotta talk to Dr. Roder.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I have.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I know you had to be.
We also have for your approval, if you remember, Mrs. Torsh had done a good job with, um, working with the Rage Soccer Club. That contract is, is now in its final stages. It's been reviewed by Brian Subers and is ready for your approval at our next voting meeting. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Torsh to tell you a little bit about, the initial amount has been adjusted a little bit downward due to the change in field availability in the fall, but we have already received the first payment of twenty-five hundred dollars from them for the use of the field. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Torsh and, and her role and her initiative in bringing this to the district. You want to talk a little bit about what I just said with the, the change from when we originally proposed it?
We originally were proposing to utilize a field for a whole year, but because we couldn't accommodate their schedule in August, September, or October, because that's when our facility is most used with, between boys' football, soccer, and the boys' football team, I think those are even our sports, to be able to run around, we just couldn't fit their schedule all the way. So we changed the initial funding from ten thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, well, thank you very much for bringing them to us. I think that's fabulous, so.
And beyond the money, we're hoping to open up some soccer opportunities for our kids as well.
Absolutely. I think it's a great opportunity all the way around.
They are probably gonna help Michelle Doc as well in the summertime for summer events and athletics, because I know she's talking about having some pants. And they are really, very willing to come out and offer their services that come far to support any of the, that she might want to do as far as soccer.
That's great. Is Miss Goss here?
No, she had a prior commitment.
Oh, okay. Any board comments? Okay, seeing none, any public comments? All right, finance?
You'll have your routine course approvals. Budget transfers are attached for you. These stipends, if you remember, these were doubled last year at the suggestion of a community member as our show of appreciation to the local fire companies.
Aren't these fire companies consolidated now? Birdsboro and Monocacy?
Well, Monocacy's actually consolidated with Amity.
Let's admit, Amity and Monocacy, I think, have been consolidated, obviously Birdsboro and Union got consolidated.
Yeah, Monocacy and, and Amity, if I'm not mistaken, are consolidated under a single, because they're, they're across the world all the time.
You just ought to check that out.
Yeah, we'll check that out. I wasn't aware of that.
And they have that all on.
Yeah, I think-
All right, well, we'll make a note of that and check into it. And if it has to be adjusted, we'll adjust that for the voting meeting.
Okay.
Item D, BTCT requires your vote on the, their general fund operating budget. The attachment has been provided to you. Again, you can turn this down. I don't know, Mr. Wolf, if you wanted to add anything from your work with them and you sat in on the, the presentation?
Actually, yeah.
Oh, you missed that one? Okay. The details are explained in their attachment. They, they've made a few changes. It's up a little bit. But again, they need, I think it's two-thirds of the school districts. They don't need approval from every school district in the, I think one year we actually, we voted it down.
Almost did last year.
Was it last year?
It was just because of the increase.
Yeah.
It was, it did it.
It was right in their backyard.
Their backyard, in their median.
There was more than just an increase.
Yeah. Are they, is salary and benefits the drive, is salary and benefits the driving cause of their increases as well, or what is the reason?
The report out that we saw, you know, after the fact, because we, we didn't go, was that, just like us, that's what's driving a lot of the increase?
Okay. I just wanted to check. Our participation is pretty much level where it's been, it's predicated on our participation.
Yeah, but it's, it's always lagging back here, right?
Correct.
Right, so it's our three-year average. I'm back.
Okay.
Item E is just a general update with our budget. Again, with your worksheet or with your board agenda, we provided you the budget worksheet that has factored in the most recent changes from the last budget workshop. Again, we're working from this balanced budget document, still contains many program reductions, but based on your resolution at our budget meeting, now has kindergarten and extracurriculars back in it. Other adjustments have also been made based on any new data that we have learned and I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Penza for the numbers part of that conversation at this time. Sorry, go ahead.
That's correct. I actually have them highlighted for you in, in color so you can see what actually changed from the last budget meeting. A few of the changes on the expenditure side, we had a reduction in our transportation budget based on the CPIU for the Philadelphia area. That resulted in a savings of thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. There's a slight reduction in the technology budget of around nine hundred dollars. The next few have to do with the bumping scenarios as well as, again, people obtaining different certifications and different folks being given to me from the different areas. We would have a reduction in savings, which means it actually would, our expense would increase for the elementary basic skills by twelve thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. We would have an additional savings of fourteen thousand, seventy-nine dollars based on the elimination of four middle schools' core sub-grad positions. And we would have a reduction in savings for professional staff returning from leave, bumping to current LTS, which would increase the budget in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. We have increased the expenditure adding back kindergarten, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We increased the expenditures due to adding back all the extra curriculars in the amount of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. We had professional staff salary advances in February, which resulted to an additional expenditure of sixty thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Due to those salary advances, there was additional savings in the category of the elimination of three full-time elementary teachers of three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, as well as in the demotions of elementary encores, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. Based on the VCTC budget that you are viewing this evening, I am decreasing the proportionate share based on that budget by one thousand, two hundred and six dollars and the VCTC special needs portion by two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. There was a reduction in the middle school supply budget of two thousand dollars and I've reduced the unemployment compensation cost by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars based on the adding back of kindergarten and your extracurriculars. That brings us right now to a proposed expenditure amount of fifty-three million, eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Moving on to the revenue piece, the changes as we have talked about, I believe it was at the budget meeting, we increased revenue for the transportation reimbursement by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year. There was a reduction of the tax increase based on exception number one in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars. Reduction of the tax increase based on the exception number two, which was a special education, reduction of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and four dollars. We added back the gate receipts and the activity fees and physicals based on adding back the extra curriculars. The gate receipts was sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. The activity fee and physical fee, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Also, we added back the self-funded clubs, the revenue from those clubs and activities, eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Again, based on adding back kindergarten, extracurriculars, I've increased the social security reimbursement by thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and the retirement reimbursement by seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And we received our most updated real estate assessments. They actually went down slightly, so I had to reduce the actual revenues projected by four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Currently, the proposed revenues are fifty-one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's leaving us with a difference in a placeholder currently of use of fund balance, one million, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
One of the, the questions, and this was something that we went over, Mr. McCullough explained it to me a couple of times, and I know Mr. Corey brought it up, when he looks
when he looks at, how come our, you know, part of our benefits go one way, but when we take the heads out, they're not the equal percentage? And I didn't know it, I was only realizing that unemployment insurance, we don't have unemployment, it's not unemployment, so when we lay, you know, we deferral a teacher, the district pays that unemployment, it's not a fee, so we had four hundred and...
I had five hundred thousand dollars total, I had had fifty in originally, and then when all the furloughs and demotions were put on the table, I had to put in another, that goes in under the two hundred.
There's a half a million of benefits.
Correct.
It gets offset, it's an offset.
Offsets, and then there's the Peasars and some other, so, yeah, our salaries may go up in percentage, but the other benefits went up a greater percentage, so that's why it didn't weigh out.
And your demotions, just so you know, your healthcare and stuff, wouldn't be reduced, it would just be your social security and retirement. So on the furloughs, you're going to see a greater, because you're going to see the medical and the dental and all that, but on demotions, you won't see that.
I see here on the, on the fund balance, this is updated as of January 31st, have you guys?
We haven't yet, because we're still trying to close out February. I've been talking to Mr. Boyer, and we hope to have that number either updated for the voting meeting or whenever our next budget meeting is. But we've been, we don't have everything in for February yet to do that projection.
When do you anticipate getting those numbers in?
I know we're still entering revenues, I believe, and expenses, we were just emailed today to post the payroll and the benefits, I believe. So, maybe by the end of next week.
Is that going to also include the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It will at that point, when I, when I go through and do my revenues, I will add that for this year, yes.
Any other board questions? Any questions from the public?
Just curious, state of the matter, Dr. Spill, question on taxes. Is there a reason why you're not taking the full increase in taxes, if you have such a large head of final benefit coverage?
Well, I think the reason for not taking the full tax increase with the special exceptions was because some of us on the board fields of the taxpayers are already getting crunched with raised, with rising taxes and have been for a considerable period of time. And so we're trying to weigh that with our other constraints of program cuts and bringing back activities and kindergarten, so it's a balancing act, we're trying to use a little bit of fund balance, a little bit of tax increases and program cuts across the board.
But let me add, that doesn't mean you can't yet.
Yeah, I mean, is there a large head of taxes that we're possibly going to act on, but the place of exceptions that actually use in four taxes? The benefit increases really long, that's why they're there.
Sure, I mean, look, the, the special exceptions allow us to increase taxes beyond the index. You know, my personal opinion on it is that, right now, the Act One index is 100% being used to cover costs that are out of our control, and we have to be mindful of the residents in this district that are, can't afford their real estate taxes right now. You know, that's a constraint as well. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but the county just recently raised their taxes, and it's 7.375 mils. Union Township raised their taxes 1.5 mils. Birdsboro, the residents of Birdsboro have very steep water and sewer bills, in addition to the real estate taxes that they pay. So, you put it all together, and you have to be mindful as well of the constituents out there that are having a hard time making ends meet just to stay in their homes.
I understand, I mean, all tax, I mean, it just, it just gives you the full, it depends on the, the increase in taxes, like, you know, it's a whole.
Well, remember, it's a hundred dollars per household this year, it was a hundred and something dollars per household last year, and the year before, and the year before. It's an aggregate number, and I'm sure you'll get some comments from other people in the audience who have represented those taxpayers, when their taxes used to be two thousand and now four thousand.
I bet you're certain, it's, it's big, it's definitely, it's definitely a long one.
The point is, the point is, until the budget's actually passed, anything is still on the table to be looked at, so to say that we're not raising it to the index, you can't say that until the end of June, we know the budget. That they would take it off the table, when we walk through, we walk through a balanced budget, two weeks ago. But, doesn't mean that, it can't be brought back up in the vote.
What are your thoughts on 367, does anybody have off the top of their head what the savings were for the basic skill, the elimination of furloughs, basic skills, elementary, they have in the elementary encores, what kind of net savings were?
Net savings.
I can give you some numbers, they're just preliminary at this point. The, at this point, based on the personnel that would be involved, you asked first the elementary band?
Yes.
Approximately 117,000?
Okay.
But then you've got to go to the other side of the sheet, though.
See, that's, this is a little bit of a math problem, what was the other one you asked while she was figuring?
Basic skills?
The basic.
I'm sorry, number 38.
No, that 117 was the reduction in the budget on the right side.
Yeah, but then there's more on the left side because of the other.
There's a lot of bumping that's been going on, so we've got to make sure we.
The point is, what we get to, is two weeks ago, you were willing to vote on adding back the kindergarten and extracurricular, not raising beyond the exception, with not completing the exception, and to take two million. Based on what I heard, right now, the general fund you're looking at 1.735. So you, you're actually still at 265,000 kind of in there. Would the board look at bringing back some of those other things that are given in that 265? Since you're already kind of approved, taking two million from the general fund.
Excuse me, we didn't, we didn't take. We were going to work on, the problem with using too many dollars of fund balance, is there too many dollars in the hole immediately next year.
I can understand that, but.
So, there's other things in play first, that have to come out before we can talk about, effectively, needing more fund balance than ever.
But you're not using necessarily more, because based on what Mrs. Penza just said, expenses of fifty-three million and revenue fifty-one, you were having a placeholder of 1.735.
You're correct, in the sense there's, instead of using two million dollars of fund balance, we're now looking at 1.7. But, the question you just heard me ask was, how much fund balance do we have available? And that number has not been provided to us yet, so we don't know whether we're on target or off target in terms of our fund balance for this year. So how much of two million out of what are we taking, right? And so that's something we need to know, that's number one, and I think number two, you can see how these numbers have jumped around just in a week and a half, three hundred thousand dollars, so before, I think this board's prepared to start bringing things back in, only to take them out later, we'd like to get some more solidity, we'd like to solidify, I think, some of these other decisions before we go down that path.
And I'm not saying we can't, you know, I'm saying we should consider it.
Anything's on the table between, look, we've, we've said this, we've said this many times, that we will be working on this budget until June 30th.
Absolutely, I mean, so, made a decision on APC, there's money in there. I just thought, since you were willing to take two million two weeks ago, why not put it back in, something else that can bring back those savings?
Just for the record, the APC issue has to go through its process.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
Shane Hogg, we'll be 30 days ahead. I remember, this has to do with the sports budget, Michelle Goss came in with small presentation of how she planned on cutting back some of the expenses in the first sports budget. Did she ever come back in with a, a better proposal? I mean, I've been saying this for, for several years now, that that budget really needs to get a really good look at, because there's a lot of wasteful money, you know, from, and a lot of the permits, did she ever come back with things she wants to do in order to help lower that five dollar?
I haven't seen a, a new budget.
No, the budget that was put back was her original submission, so, to me, no, she has not.
I mean, would the board look at, sort of, Finance Committee could look at it again, as, as well as the Revenue Enhancement Committee is trying to find ways to fund that, but you use the term wasteful, is, has been pretty strong.
We've seen the budget, and, you know, when you look at the costs, the total cost for each sport, we've had this conversation before, we see what the stipends are, you see what the transportation costs are, and you see what some of the supply costs are. And quite frankly, the supply cost is, is de minimis when you actually look at the overall cost of the program, it's stipends that's driving the budgets, so, you know.
One thing, Shane, when we had our rec meeting, Ms. Goss did present to us, she was looking through some ways to save some money, and I know, the one item in particular was, you know, laundry, dry cleaning.
Right, I was there for that presentation.
Right, so that was one thing that she was taking out for.
Right, did the board consider the fact of more, you know?
No, not at this point.
Better understanding of how, certainly, you were saving money.
Or I believe it's an on committee, possibly.
The committee, I'm sorry, the committee.
We, we went a different turn, so, we're looking at, since we're taking, eliminating out all sports, then she's looking at ways, we've been looking at ways altogether to now bring sports back in and make it more affordable and have parents pay. So, her, really, the budget has nothing in it that is wasteful, it was line by line, months or everything, and there's comes out the stipends, and transportation, really, for the parents that are fundraising to maintain most of the supply. It's their bone. It's the stipends of your transportation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a ready, you got a copy of that budget? I mean, all, all the ways, the past ways of thinking, things that I thought the board may complain about, and then eventually, like, the free reinsurance. I know, it's long, but you know, you noticed it before.
Absolutely, Shane, I think if you, you know, tell us what you want, if you, you're asking for what is the athletic budget, is that what you want?
Yeah.
We can make that available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, get that done in notes.
I filed Smith on a complaint about this, so, just needed clarification, when we were here, I guess, two weeks ago, the decision was made to keep the exit programs and sports. Once that, we went through a bunch of numbers, I think, we went through a bunch of numbers, and kind of shows how we can keep those programs. Please give me a quick overview of where we're still looking to increase fees to offset that cost, and when we say we bring them back, it was money that was moved around and saved from other areas.
Right, right now, when I did the walk back, we walked it back with those numbers and used fund balance to plug the hole. Now, if the Revenue Enhancement Committee comes back, we left that open, remember, the Revenue Enhancement Committee comes back and says, we're going to increase activity to X, and the board adopts it, and that takes away money that was out of
Fund balance.
That used to plug that hole. If they come back and say it's going to be fully funded, and the board approves it by each sport paying their full load of whatever their cost is, then that's where that comes from, but right now, it's business as usual until the 30th of June, when the budget's voted and/or some other policy.
I think, Mr. Smith, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to figure out a way to make sure that the extracurriculars become a self-funded, if possible, a self-funded entity, so that they won't be at risk to future budget cuts. I mean, ideally, that's where I'd like to see things, okay, so that we don't have, the kids don't have to worry, and the parents don't have to worry that those things will disappear someday, because, you know, the budget becomes a problem, all right? And to get there is, I don't know how we get there, but we've got to think of lots of different ways to do that. So one of them is reducing costs, and the other one is increasing revenues. And whether that's gate receipts, or activity fees, or fundraising, there's lots of different way, advertising, there's lots of different ways that we can figure out a way to boost revenues, and on the other side, we've got to figure out, how do you, how do you cut the costs? So what are the costs, we've sort of identified what they are, transportation, stipends, and, and some material costs. And, and we've got to figure out, how do you reduce those things? Well, the biggest nuts on there are stipends and, and transportation, so, you know, that's what the Revenue Enhancement Committee is working on, and they're going to keep working on it right through June 30th. And I'm hopeful they'll have a recommendation sometime in May, or June, early June, for this board to adopt, so that we, we reduce that overall exposure. That, that line on our budget is about six hundred and, what, ninety-eight thousand dollars or something like? Six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and we generate close to two hundred thousand dollars in revenues now, so there's a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar difference that we've got to figure out some way to, to fund.
Right, so we should have the proposal to use money from the savings that we have still on the table. There could be a chance where we don't need to increase the fees to the amount where we start to out price them, you know, so. And things like, you know, activity fees don't get too far out of hand, physical fees don't get too far out of hand, so make sure that people wear those things.
Yeah, I took note of that in your email, that you were saying, exactly, we're not trying to out price ourselves, but we're trying to bring in, offset some of the costs. Somehow figure out so that the last one, just this year, we don't use all our fund balance, who's kind of learned how to manage. But, my guess is that something has to give, we're going to have to increase something, we just don't know what yet, for the time being.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Under personnel, lump all those together, and you will get changes as they come to us. Just do want to make note, first, professional A1A, Ms. Gerhardt, our high school librarian, is leaving us. She was found employment with the Department of Education, so she's going to be leaving us, working in the same field. Obviously, with our, our cutbacks, we weren't able to offer her full-time work, so I'd like to wish her well. The rest of the appointments, et cetera, are there for your review, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
I have a big question, when I talked about this, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Corey's personally, but we're approving somebody that already, I thought we had, that has already performed your service, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we had talked as a board that we were not going to post date anybody's volunteer approvals, when we had that issue previously, or remember, our policy was set in place, so.
No matter who it is.
No, again, it doesn't matter.
Again, I agree with you, same.
Or Mr. Martino, or anybody else out there in the audience, the fact is that, you know, we are now, if we were to vote not to approve him, and he's already done, this is where we came in before, where we had somebody that was performing a, a extracurricular, had been doing it already for six months, and then we were approving them to do that role. So, and again, if this board can't follow its own policies, we really can't expect the public and/or others to follow that policy. So, again, we're going to approve it because he's already done it, but I think that we need to be cognizant of that fact and, and keep that before.
Well, there is.
Mr. Shane, it wasn't just the volunteers, it was also, there was a stipend involved in one, and they had to work. You know what I'm saying, I agree with what you're saying, I'm thinking, correct, you can't post date.
Just in this, in this particular case, and again, with Connor, out of the, we have a number of volunteers that come through just on the Raptor, and if they bring their money in, they're allowed to go in on that day and work, and that's really within the policy to do that. So there have been some other people who have just gotten the Raptor, who are constantly supervised, that have come to your attention. So if we need to take a look at that, then we need to take a look at that. But if we do that, then what's going to happen is some of our daily people that want to come in just for a day?
It's major policy, I mean, that, that.
I, I just want to, I, I don't want to make the system so difficult for people that they won't want to volunteer for us.
If you want to come in and volunteer, to, and, and go through, pay the money for the Raptor, go through that whole process, then let's not go through the process of having to approve them, if it's already been said and done, and then say, hey, I want to go do this tomorrow afternoon, here's the money for the Raptor, come in and help out, and go through that process. If they're going to approve you a Raptor, which is what we set in place to do, then the board shouldn't have to vote on it for one, for.
Well, if that, we can certainly make that adjustment.
I'm not ahead of the policy committee, but I don't know what your feelings are on that one.
We can, we can discuss that on Wednesday night, if you'd like.
I just don't, I don't like post dating an approval of something that's already happened.
Yeah, again, I, I go back to, recall that our, our issue before was for a paid stipend, it wasn't for a volunteer. But, but either way, what happened, and again, I'll be, what happens if something doesn't work out with any volunteer, and you, and Mr. Shane's problem is, you're then, we had, we never voted on it, we never voted yea or nay. That's the issue, post dating is the problem, it's nothing to do with volunteer or stipend, it has to do with what if there became an issue with any person, and, and again, not, not this particular person, obviously, but, that's the problem, we, we did not approve it.
I don't think they didn't use it to help people even do what I would do, you know, we said, I'm here, I want to give volunteer.
Okay, you all asked. But, I didn't, it was a clear refree, and I want to get this on the regular administration, I of course will have given that expectation free.
That, oh, that, no, and that is correct.
It's nothing to do with. No, we didn't say. We, we can talk through the details Wednesday night at the policy meeting.
Again, again, it could be anybody, and we're post dating somebody's approval to be a volunteer.
What does the policy say?
For the, for anybody to do what, in, in this case, what Connor did, their only clearance required is the Raptor check.
No, I know that, but what does the policy say in terms of superintendent approval or administration approval versus board approval?
I, I don't.
Because some of our policies give the.
It may be, it might be silent on that, I'd have to go back and look at it.
I mean, because some of our policies give the administration the authority to make approvals, and some say administration and/or board, or administration with ultimate board approval. So if, if our policy allows administration to approve volunteers, and then it ultimately comes to us for our final approval, at the whim of the board, quite frankly, some of these policies say and/or. So, if it's an or, then I don't see an issue with a volunteer being approved. So let's follow up the policy and take a look before we.
I'll read the policy, in fact, I didn't see this until just recently.
Full document, you know.
And I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it, this is, it just, it just stuck out.
I think, I think, I mean, it has. I think, I think, I mean, it has, I'm not saying what you, saying it doesn't have credence, but I'm just saying that the issue, I think, is, I'm not so worried about volunteers if the administration comes through and approves somebody. I think the issue is, if we have somebody who's getting paid and they haven't been approved by this board, that's an issue.
And he got his Raptor, he already had his, I mean, he had the Raptor, so I get less of concern that you've had that part done, so.
Well, let me make it clear, we have stuck to that part of the policy where no one is getting paid prior to board approval.
Yeah, I think that's the policy that we changed.
Right, that, that has happened.
It might be, but then you should look at that under your policy for volunteer. Just in case something ever happens with a volunteer and we never approve them. No problem. Oh, I have, I have, I'm looking at the policy. A person may not assume the position of a volunteer, render any service, or assume any responsibility of a volunteer until unless all procedures have been followed and all people were kept in this meeting.
And then you have to go through the procedures, then.
Well, what is it?
Is there an administrative guideline for that?
They clouded the issue now.
We'll take a look at it Wednesday night.
If anybody wanted to volunteer, they might not want to have to read this 14-page policy, I mean-
Well, that's, and that was the point I was trying to make, that if we're looking for people to give of their time, I agree, safety's first, but, and I'll, using the case of Connor, he passed our clearance and was not with anyone before he shouldn't have been. So I think safety was taken care of first, but we can certainly take a look at the policy and make sure it's clear for everybody.
I think my recollection was, because it doesn't matter, we'll look at it at Policy Committee on Wednesday. All right, are there any other comments from the board on these issues? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the public? All right, great.
I do wanna thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to programs.
A, B, and C are just informational items. Item D, this is that time of the year when we start to talk about the graduation date. Generally, we wait until the month of April, but given that, I don't wanna jinx the weather, but it looks like we're heading toward a good stretch. If we do not need any further makeup days for the weather, we are looking at holding the graduation ceremony on Friday, June 7th. And again, just for the public, don't write that down yet, that's not final, but it's close to final.
We also did, we did get, we could talk about that in curriculum as well, as Subers, that even if we were to add a snow day or something, an extra day, we could still graduate the seniors early.
That is correct.
So, I mean, it's probably, unless we get two or three days in the world, that's probably a pretty solid-
Fridays are ideal, if we can use them.
Backup day Saturday.
Backup day being Saturday.
Correct. So, just pray for good weather. And the last item under programs, just again, with the curtailment applications, not to make a lot of this at this point, those applications obviously have been tabled by the board, and at any point when we pull the string on any of them, they will have to be submitted, if you decide to access any of those reductions for those that have been filled out. So that's just a reminder item.
What about the wellness grant?
And then the wellness grant is obviously our annual approval, that's money into the district, that doesn't come at any cost to us.
How much?
What is the, Mrs. Torch, it's about $35,000 for the Pottstown Wellness Grant?
I don't think so, I can't find it.
We can get you the, we'll get you the figure.
Just curious, thank you.
Okay, any comments from the board members on those items? Okay, seeing none, any public comment on program? Okay, policy.
All right, I'll kind of approach this by taking questions. The Policy Committee has been hard at work, you see quite a few this month. Items A through Q have been reviewed in the Policy Committee and have been edited to reflect the committee's work. The deleted policies, whenever you see those, those are no longer needed, and the reasons they're not needed, they've either been taken care of somewhere else, they're not applicable to the law anymore, or they are simply outdated and need to be fixed. So, for the members of the Policy Committee, they've worked hard, and these, if you wanna come to a long committee meeting, come to our Policy Committee meetings, they turn into long discussions, but I rather than walk you through each one, if you look at the policies, usually, sometimes there's just a few words that are edited. If you have questions about those, we can certainly entertain them now, remember, they are first reading and they are still subject to change. So if we wanna take A through Q as questions-
How they go up through your committee?
After this night, they'll, from here, they'll, we take them, bring them to you first, and then they'll head off to Mr. Subers. Just, I do wanna bring your, maybe I should draw your attention to a few. The universal precautions, is that's the word now for the policy that used to, that came about as when the HIV crisis hit back in the eighties, the wording has been changed there. The pediculosis, headlights policy, those series of policies have also not only been reviewed by the Policy Committee, but by the district nurses as well. They came to Mr. Mclemmell with recommendations for what they know to be. Item 203, the communicable diseases and immunization policies have been fixed. And as you can see now, we are starting to add the administrative guidelines right away. With this series, now we have caught up with all the administrative guidelines moving forward, we will be doing policy and standing administrative guideline right with it, so we don't have to backtrack anymore. So there's quite a bit of reading, I know there's a lot of material there, but again, as I said, when we started this project, this was long overdue, and we're slowly making progress. Items A through G, A through N are policies that really were just, the dates were old on the paper, regulations within the school code and state board regulations have not changed. But again, if you remember last month, we said we wanted to bring them forward to you, just to acknowledge that, so we can stamp a new date on them, so that when future generations see them, they can see that these policies were also reviewed and not just passed on. So there's quite a bit of paperwork there, if you have any questions, again, they are first readings, give us your comments and we'll move them forward, but at this point, we'll move them forward to Mr. Subers for review, and have them on for second reading next month then.
Okay, any questions from board members, comments, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, moving on to transportation.
Just one note, tomorrow, I know the Transportation Committee has been hard at work with our contractors, I have asked for an administrative meeting to see what else we might be able to do to consolidate transportation services, so after I have that meeting, I'll report out to the board on what happened there. Mr. Boyer will be part of that meeting, I believe, myself, and the contractors will be sending some representatives as well.
I, just one note, and I don't know, again, I'm not part of the committee, I'm all the chairs, and anything we can do, I mean, I saw again today, busting down high school kids, there must not have been eight kids on the bus, you know, and, you know, if we're at the end of that run.
We did ask them, look at that, I'm sure Dr. Otto's gonna ask them again tomorrow, to look at the runs.
I know, they keep talking about, you know, length of runs and stuff, but, you know, if we're gonna save $150,000 adding an extra 15 minutes to a high school bus run, you know, it is what it is.
Those questions will be on the table when we, they've been, they've been willing to come forward and have a meeting with us, and we wanna look at, you know, don't leave any stone unturned, so we'll find out what we find out, see what we find out tomorrow.
We have the same thing like two weeks ago.
Okay, any comment from the public on transportation?
Shane Cockle, did anyone move into, if you could put three students to a seat?
Yes. Yes. I don't know the full answer to that, I do know that we did ask the question.
We actually called the Department of Transportation, and you have to have 13 inches for our students-
Body, for their body.
So with that said, you can have three students to a seat, however, if you have a student that measures a little bit more than that, then you may not have three per seat, but you can-
Well, it's a safety issue, if they can't fit, they can't fit.
For the 13 inches to have three per seat.
At the elementary level.
At any level.
I don't met any high school kids that can get 13 inches across the back.
But that's what they told us, so.
Right, but my point, I want to highlight that if you use it for the high school level three per seat, because you're already looking at 80, 10 kids in all those classes anyway, at least you're putting 70 high school kids in there, you can eliminate some of the high school-
Those have a maximum capacity.
There is, yeah, max-
Okay.
Correct.
Well, whatever that maximum number is, you're still gonna lose, instead of having 10 high school kids.
Mr. Cockle, we asked the transportation companies, look at this, they know the laws, they're gonna go back and review them again, but we're pretty much what we can do, okay? You can't, with high school kids, there is some limitations to the number of kids, because they're bigger and everything else, so we did go back and, I think that's why we're doing this tomorrow.
Right, okay, because that was what you're putting down.
I know, you did ask that question again.
If you put more kids on a high school-
I understand, but, okay, we don't have an answer tonight.
Mr. Cockle, we're looking into it.
We don't have an answer tonight, that's on tape.
Just one, one minute. Okay?
That was it, that was my one question.
All right, thank you. Go ahead. Could you state your name and address, please?
I actually wanted to go ahead and ask you a question, but I have actually, that's the representative, and apparently the answer was, you can put three to a seat, but you have to, you're discerning now that it is regulated for the bus, whatever that capacity is, and that goes with the official answer.
And typically, it's written on the bus, it's something like 52 students per bus or something, which just happens to work out to two per seat on a 26-seat bus or something, so. There's also a max weight you can carry on a bus, but there's a lot of different laws, we've looked into this for-
Couple of years now.
We've even asked a question, you know, as they get older, did parents, you know, sign away their, the right to bus transportation to allow consolidation of buses? So we're asking all this.
We, we went to our vendors and they have everything possible.
Right, I understand, and I think that's great, that, from the state view, that's what the certification-
Yeah, and you could put three per seat based upon width, we did look into that at one time, but then you can't put three per seat on every seat of the bus, because then you max out on the number of seats you can have on a bus.
Yeah, exactly, so if it's like a 78-cylinder bus, you can have 78 kids across the back.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on transportation?
Seems to be getting wider every year, Karen. First part, there's 25 of us on the bus drive, not that to drag this conversation out, but Shane and I talked about this after the last meeting, that some of you know, if you're retired, the purpose of a bus here over two years, the large buses, the full-size buses are considered 72-seat buses, the fact of the amount of kids, the high school kids, especially in the way where their clothes and their backpacks, you're not gonna fit 72 of us.
Correct.
What Shane's trying to convey, though, is that on these buses, that it shouldn't be stopping at 80, 10, if you would book 72 people and 24 ride, you're still ahead of it. And that's, I think, the question is, are these buses booked?
I gotta say, I don't think it's gonna book 72, I think you'd rather get the waiver.
No, they are-
Get it, get it, I would sign a waiver saying my child would not ride the bus.
Correct.
Don't stop, and then book the bus for the number of people that did not sign it.
But Mr. Shane, we gotta find out if we can do that. That's one of the questions that's brought up. One of the questions that's brought up is, can we do that? But yes, right now, every kid, as I understand, every kid in the district is assigned to a bus seat.
I believe there are other districts in the Commonwealth that do that.
I agree, but I'm not understanding, right now, though, every kid is assigned a seat.
What we're saying is, is are the buses predicted to full capacity? And if you find it, and they're voted because they want to actually be riding, then you have to make adjustments, but to have buses for ages, that people-
The way, the way I understand now is, the buses are scheduled, fill the capacity, if the students assign, actually take it. But a student might not ever sit on that bus, but there is a seat. We're trying to figure out ways, one, the waiver way, or whatever, to consolidate that kids would never ride the bus, do not assign a seat.
It's been a few years, Mr. Cockle, and I think you need to check on that.
I, trust me, I did.
My elementary school roster, I contain 50 some kids.
And I agree with you, that's what I said, I'm waiting for an answer from the bus company which Dr. Otto have. We only had the meeting two weeks ago, I forgot an answer yet, we didn't have a follow-up meeting. Those are some of the questions I did ask. Hopefully, they go to Dr. Otto tomorrow.
Any other public comment on transportation? Okay, seeing none, old business, Market Street, do we have an update?
Yes, you do, we do. I was able to move this forward, I just received today, this is a busy time for Market Street with the PIAA wrestling going on and PIAA events, they are heavily invested in working with the PIAA, but the gentleman that did come to our Revenue Enhancement Committee meeting emailed me a template of a contract that, it's rather expensive, so I wanna make sure Mr. Subers takes a look at it and it meets our needs, but we can move that process forward. So I did get that today, and we'll be able to report out on that, maybe we'll even have something ready for the board by the voting meeting.
It's my understanding that, is that the Pottstown template?
Actually, the one they emailed us was the Governor Mifflin template.
Okay, I think they also do stuff for Pottstown, and Fox Rothschild is also a solicitor for Pottstown, so.
You know, Mr. We didn't say that last-
Yeah.
That they were using them, and that, especially, they could look at the documents, see if there's still one there.
Either way, I have one, we can certainly take a look at more than one if we have to.
Yeah, well, I just think we ought to have an answer before, you know, we should have an answer by the voting meeting, whether, you know, the contract they provided to us is acceptable or not, and then let's get 'em rolling. The longer we delay, the longer it takes to generate revenue, and that's just my personal opinion here. Any other comment on the Market Street group? Okay, any other old business?
None from us.
Okay, any public comment on the Market Street group? Okay, seeing none, move on to new business. I put on here the community task force, this is the, I think Ms. Reno brought to the board's attention that Westchester Schools had formulated a community task force to address their budget issues two or three years ago. Mr. Sammonero brought this up at the last meeting again, and then a group asked if they could form this task force. They met last Tuesday night, I think it was, and I attended, I agreed that I would volunteer my services to help them, however they needed help to get started, listened to what they had proposed, and I think they put that together in a flyer that I emailed to the board. I'm gonna ask those members to stand up here today and kind of go through that outline for the benefit of the board, and then we can talk about it. Could you just state your name again?
Sure, Laura Reno.
Okay, thank you.
What you were saying was a summary of what the initiative is, one of the main things that we met, that we wanted to make sure, is that we were working together, and that we were creating more and more meetings and doing yelled work. So one of the things we wanted to look at was dovetailing what we consider as community levels, important subcommittees, and how they could work with your current committees that you already have. For your committees, you have four school board members that sit on that board. As the community, reaching out to parents, volunteers, students, employees, anybody who was interested, we could then grow your workforce and do some of the work and the research, so that the work wasn't limited to just the four people on board, but you could have 15 or 20 people who would stay. I can look into that, I can do the research to help you speed along with the process, and also provide other ideas, programs, things that we could come up with. We had a very new group of people who all had different interests, different strengths, different backgrounds, who were interested in helping, and, I completely lost my train of words.
It'll come back to you.
Thanks.
It'll come back.
But one of the main things is, is that we need the support of the board, because we want to work with you, not against you, we want to help, because it's our children, our community, our homes. What we would need is an open working relationship with the board. We realize that you guys come to these meetings twice a month, you all have your own committee meetings, so that not to invite you to come to yet another meeting, we would come to your subcommittees, that way we don't relieve some work from you, maybe make it an even stronger organization. And what we would need really from the school would be assistance, and whether it's Mr. Otto or Mrs. Torch, I'm sitting on emails, encouraging all employees to be a part of these committees, because a lot of employees are taxpayers, they can come and speak in front of you, but the committee needs this much more informal, you're allowed to share some more ideas, and nobody knows more about what happens on a daily basis than the employees And nobody knows more about what happened on a daily basis than the employees of the district, and there might be some ideas that they can share and move forward. As one member said, maybe the boots on the ground.
Why don't you talk a little bit about the overall structure of this task force that came up at that meeting, and then how that would dovetail with a, some kind of subcommittee that this board would work with for recommendations?
Well, I believe what we have discussed was, we would create our own committees that would meet, figure out whether it's a finance committee, a curriculum, how our subcommittees could then work, which committee would we need to go to? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. So while we could have eight subcommittees within our task force, we would figure out how to work that into the finance, the curriculum, transportation, the things like that, so that really for you, what you would really see is just more involvement at your committee meetings, instead of just maybe being four members of the board and maybe two people that might show up, you would have a larger organization that would come in tech, that's more ideas also, and then maybe some of the research work.
I think you're also talking about how you would have an executive committee that would might be made up like a regular board, joint board committee, where you had a couple of board members, maybe it's one, maybe it's two, maybe it's three, on there along with this executive committee group of, it could be employees, it could be administrators, it could be, you know, homeowners or taxpayers, and that task force, subcommittee, would then make a recommendation to the board.
I, I was a little surprised when this came out, because I had asked to be part of this committee, it heard nothing. I didn't see any board member other than Mr. Basillon.
I would think I was the only one to volunteer.
I, I gave the number, I gave.
Excuse me, Mr. Shane, I, I did tell you at our last, this guest meeting, that there was going to be a meeting on Tuesday night, and you said.
Right, I was out of town, but, you know, and again, I, I think that for, for this, and again, I think it's a great idea, so I'm trying to get it in the right direction, I think that we should have at least three board members, one from each of the municipalities, not the voting regions, but municipalities, even though that, you know, we are differently in the vote, on, on board with you, I think it helps for, for just got nobody in, in to go along with that, that standpoint. I also think, and again, we don't want to volunteer our administration, but a lot of what we're looking for at your committee meeting, to have somebody from the administration, either from the business office, as well as Dr. Otto helps, for lack of losing something in translation, we lose so much in translation from, you know, your, if you put together finances in a meeting, it gets up to your executive meeting, that actually gets a answer to Mrs. Penn, or Andrew, or somebody else, you may lose something in translation, so when we have this larger meeting, I think, you know, those things, the three board members and at least one or two people from the administration would be, be part of that, would help that a lot. I did also talk to people that have done this before in other districts outside the state, as well inside the state, and that's the, sort of the direction they went also, and that we also find the numbers. Nothing worse than to know that when you put together numbers and they don't, they don't match.
I have a question. How did you get these volunteers? I mean, does everybody in the district know about this task force? I mean.
No, not yet. It was just an initial meeting, just to.
So you can allow other people to say.
Absolutely, whoever wants to be involved, as long as they have a commitment to doing something, I mean, or certainly, as many answers we can get to get information, that's great.
If I, if I might comment, one of the things that, and thank you for, you know, organizing this effort, because Mr. Basillon and I had a conversation about this earlier today when I saw the email, and just want to make sure that if you put people to work, that you're not doing something maybe that we've already done, and it's a dead end for you, so contacting the administration to say, you know, we've already looked at that, here's what we found, kind of thing, so you can take off the low-hanging fruit and look for the things that are probably a little bit deeper, would be helpful for me.
Well, I think that's why, I'll give you my flavor on, on the meeting, so it was my suggestion that they, if they were going to have these subcommittees, that they would model them to work with our subcommittees, so they're not out there beating the bushes on an idea that perhaps revenue enhancement already talked about three years ago, or facilities or transportation's already talked about three hundred times. And the only way they'll get the benefit of having that information is if their sub, let's say, revenue enhancement committee people are assigned to show up at the revenue enhancement committee meetings, and so now they're there, and they can get the minutes, and they can, you know, be part of that conversation that's happening at the table, it doesn't have to be forty people, but two or three people or four people from the public that are a part of this task force would sit with the revenue enhancement committee members and offer them their services. So when you have an idea like, hey, look, we want to bring in somebody to help us advertise, it's not the three or four board members who are not have to go home and spend, you know, their nights researching advertising companies, you've got four or five more people out there that can donate their time to do that, and then come to the committee with their efforts, the results of their efforts. And then, again, from that committee, the revenue enhancement committee, the revenue enhancement committee now has workers that are providing them with some, some additional help and resources, and then from there, you can formulate an opinion and make a recommendation to the board. I agree, we thought that having additional board members as part of their executive committee would be helpful, so that there's, there's other input from the board in terms of, this is what we really need to look at, or by the way, here's what we're working on. You know, the problem I think the taxpayers have is that they're getting information off our website that's three months old, and they're a little frustrated because they come here with questions, and we're already five iterations past that.
Well, I think that the benefit is, Basil, with board members, is, it's like we do with our committees, we have four, you're bringing your recommendation to the board, knowing you're going to get, you've got four board members already approved, already agreed with it for the most part, and, and, you know, embedded it, at least have talked to other board members about it, so if you have the three board members, we're going to reach out to other board members to make sure that when something comes up that, the odds are it's going to get, it's going to get an approval vote, instead of, you know, ahead of time, prior to, you know, getting it out, and then thinking it's great, and all of a sudden it gets voted down at a general, at a general meeting, and you're getting input from the other board.
Yeah, I, I would also, I think it's, I think it's phenomenal, I think it's great, and, and I'm, I'm all for it, and I can, I'll help you in whatever way I can help you. I don't know if this is what you're suggesting, if you're not, I would suggest it, and that is that not just three, four, two, three, four members of that, this task force sit in our committee meetings, but are actually members of that committee.
Yeah, well, again, I think you.
So you would pick three names from your task force to say, these three people are members of the revenue enhancement committee, and they're there sitting at the table as members of that committee.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's where we get all our, you know, all our work done, is we, in these committee meetings, and why would we not?
Can, can we do that, though?
Sure, I think you can, I think you can, anybody could be in the committee.
I'm not saying you bring three members to the committee, you may as well bring one, we talked about bringing a student member to part of the board, he's a non-voting member.
Well, I think you could bring, you could probably bring non-voting members on.
Well, you don't vote on any of them.
No, we both agree to bring something, we do agree to bring something.
There's no official action. Yeah, there's no actual.
No, actual official.
So I, I think you can, but we, we could find out for sure, but, you know.
Ladies, can I, can I ask you a question? Have you had any opportunity to actually reach out to anybody in Westchester to, to talk to them about how they formulated their effort there?
No, what we, what I had done is I had found the two examples that they had on, that since the Dolphin had news and posted.
Right.
They're two thousand and nine and two thousand and eleven task forces, and there are five things that they have done, and where they found their things. And then, what we had met was the people that had talked to Hannah after, after the last school board meeting.
Right.
It kind of even, we didn't get into the meat and potatoes of the Westchester, it was talking about how we were going to be organized, and what our next steps need to be, how will we work with the school board to not create yellow work, that type of thing. And as far as reaching out to other people, we hadn't yet.
Well, the reason I say that is, I sit in some regional meetings with the Westchester superintendent, and I would be happy to call that school district to find out how it actually worked as they implemented it, I think that would be some important information.
Yeah, I absolutely would.
I think the, the reason for this discussion tonight was to gauge the board, if there's a willingness of the board to enable a community task force, then that's really where we are, and if the.
I only have kryptonite concerns, I guess, and, and there are concerns that I think you, you will address, and one of them is, I, I don't want to see a task force that's not working together with us closely and, and trying to go get answers on their own, and bombarding the business office with questions, because we already have, there's already nine of us that are, that are beaten down, and Miss Penn's.
In other words, they.
She doesn't need another set of people banging down a board.
Almost like they have no access to, they have access to board members, but not access to administration. And that's not, that's not just like, but.
The whole point of this is, is to work in conjunction with you, and certainly, within the subcommittees, you were going to have, one person that was in charge of that, that would be actually interacting mostly with these different things, so if you, as the school board are not being bombarded, it doesn't talk, you know, we understand that we're here to help, that's the whole point. As Dr. Otto was saying to me earlier, it, it takes a village, and, and that's what we're really trying to do here, and we're trying to really mobilize the community as well to be with you, you know, so we can build something really fabulous for, you know, our kids, and I think that we have an amazing opportunity here, and, you know, we're not here to get in the way, we're not here to be a bother, there are so many things, even this tonight's meeting, you're talking about the transportation, and saying, well, you know, we're looking at this, we're looking at that, and we have to change our, you know, if, if there are five people that could just give you that answer, I mean, that would be great, you want to go, you want to do it for family, you don't need to be making phone calls and, you know, stuff like that, you know, we get that, and that's why we're here.
And part of it is, maybe to look to the school board, and dovetailing it with your current committees, is if we have something that we follow to the revenue enhancement committee, rather than don't need to miss the chance of the answer, if we're working with this panel, she may already have the number or the information that that committee is looking at, so that if they're working with, so that we know we don't have to go in and ask for the same thing that fifteen other people have asked, we can go to one person who's working with us, who would already have that information.
Well, I, I can tell you, I will, will pledge my support to help you as much as I can, obviously, from an employment standpoint, it's begging the obvious, I, I work for this board, but I'll be happy to help you in, in any way that, that we can, that, that doesn't unreasonably impose upon us, and I will make that phone call to Westchester tomorrow for you, and Mrs. Tyge and I have already talked, so we'll try to help you move your effort forward.
Mr. Sermonaro, you had a second point. Did you get to your second point?
No.
I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, no, the, the only other point I was going to make is, we, we don't want to tie them down to the point where they're just mixed into some of the same sort of bureaucratic red tape that we're, we're.
Absolutely.
They're, they've got a fresh outlook on things, and they're looking at it from a different standpoint, and I'd still like to see that, and not, not tie their hands down to the point where it's just more people doing the same song and dance.
Well, I think I can learn a lot.
I like the fresh perspective coming in, and, and fresh ideas, and.
And, and I think to that point, you're having a member, I mean, I'm not sure if you want three or four people as part of our community, just that you're going to add a, a head of the committee, so, I mean, I just put in the structure, and have him head of that committee, sit in as part of the board, now we got five people discussing versus eight, nine people trying to discuss it, and we'll get a lot more done in a very focused point.
Well, I think the.
I see having, you know, my four people and their four people, then you got eight people going back and forth, versus, you know, the four board members and, and their representatives, because obviously, people in the audience are there, and that way it gets focused, and I think the other benefit from that is, information that's needed, as you said, coming back from us, and they're going to fill out on the forums.
Well, I think that's what we want to do, is we want to have a board member affiliated with that, so that we get rid of this right-to-no issue.
Right, definitely.
And they, they get information real time, as we're discussing, if they can see what we're seeing.
And it's the same, it's the same set of.
Exactly. I think the gist of the meeting tonight was, if there's, if there's a consensus on this board to help formulate this task force, then that's step one, and if I don't hear any objections, then we'll move in that direction. The second part, then, is a discussion of structure, and, which we're sort of having, and if we can agree on a structure, and we can get some insight from Westchester or other places on how they did it, and maybe lessons learned, maybe there's a more efficient way than, than the way they've done it, then we can set up that structure, and these people can start enlisting recruits to fill out those, those positions, and then we can get them to start attending our meetings. There'll have to be some sort of official vote by this board as to who, which board members are going to participate and what level, and, and then we'd have to probably approve the members of, of the task force.
We do have to watch with board members attending individual committee meetings, and they would have to be a member of the audience, which is sitting up front, obviously, because then you have five board members, and.
Well, we obviously take care of that now with the four board members, yeah.
I just wanted to thank you guys for the dedication, great bringing perspective, so thank you.
Okay, so I think next step, we'll do it, you guys want to reach out to Dolphin, the Dolphin School District and see what they did, Dr. Otto's going to reach out to the Westchester School District, if there's other school districts that have enabled task force, task forces, let's find out what structure they use, so that we can hopefully replicate that here to some degree, and take some of the legwork out, so we can get this thing up and running a little bit faster than, I'd like to see this thing, it should take a couple of weeks to get up and rolling here as opposed to months.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if your individual committees come out and, you know, you get this going, as you said, there are, like with transportation, we've gone over a number of things legally that you don't, as you mentioned, so that we can try to get some of the chatter off, and get down to action, get into the details, you know, reach out to the committee chairs and probably help get, if you've got a laundry of ideas, you know, pick three of these, if these don't fly, there's thirty of them.
And absolutely, because things have been discussed in the past, they may not be feasible legally, but there may be things that have been discussed in the past that were popular three or four years ago, but times have changed, and while they may not be the most popular still, they need to be accessible.
Right, right, so I think what you guys can do is try to find us some other examples in terms of how they organize their, their organizational structure, so to speak, and then also, I guess, start talking to folks in the community who want to get involved, so you can start thinking about where those people will, will be in the subcommittees, and who might, you would like to have then come up to the committee level and participate on those subcommittees of the board, and if you've got those names sort of in mind, that would certainly help when we have the next meeting to kind of solidify that, okay?
And to that end, as far as these, you know, these committees go in.
We, yeah, I mean, in terms of meeting places, our committees right now meet at the Matthew Brook Building, and if, I would imagine if your subcommittees are looking for a place to meet, you would talk to Dr. Otto, the Matthew Brook Building basement really isn't being used, other than by this board and our subcommittees.
And for occasional professional development meetings during the day.
But that happens during the day, so if you guys needed to use a space to meet, I think we could facilitate that Matthew Brook Building to be a place for that.
Move all our committee meetings to standard fixed nights, or is that anything?
Yeah.
Can we get a meeting tomorrow, seven thirty?
We're not there. Okay, so. That's open. Dr. Otto just said the building's open, so we can make sure that he can have the meeting in the basement of the Matthew Brook Building at seven thirty. Okay, can you just send an email to Dr. Otto to remind him?
Okay, we already made notes.
Never hurts to get a second email.
Never hurts.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, Dr. Otto, you also want to talk about cyber charter schools.
Um, there were, as you saw, board members, there was a request made to kind of give an update, if you remember back, earlier in the year, we had been kicking around, actually did some initial research on, on cyber options, we kind of held off at that time based on where the state might be going with funding, I, I think we're kind of running out of time to wait to see what the state might do, so we're currently formulating a recommendation to implement some kind of cyber option as a way to expand, not just to save money, but also as a way of expanding our curriculum offerings, and obviously secondarily to return students who are currently Daniel Boone residents, students, enroll that cyber schools. I've invited Mr. Boyer here this evening, he's already done the legwork, and I think he can make the case for why we want to do this, as you listen to some of the numbers he's going to share, but just from a, a view of ten miles out, we're currently faced, and I'll use the words significant, with a significant portion of our budget that has now been earmarked for students who choose to attend cyber schools, and again, I'm not here to disparage that option, it is an option that has been made available to students in the state of Pennsylvania, that obviously happened legislatively, and it is now in place with, really, it's an outgrowth of the cyber charter school law that was passed back in nineteen ninety-seven. A number of years ago, they added cyber schools to be able to buy into that process. Basically, what that means, again, for the public, is that students who are enrolled at Daniel Boone, who choose not to, and it's all by choice, who choose not to want to attend here any longer, are allowed to enroll in a cyber charter school, and then the state uses a formula, a calculated tuition, that we would have to then send, not have to, which we already do send, to these cyber charter schools to cover the cost, as it's set up now, to cover what, in other words, the money follows the student. Some schools in our county, and in other counties, and then across the state, already have some programs in place, while others are still kind of where we are, in the investigatory early development stage as to how to really deal with this issue, because it's now become a serious fiscal issue. So I've invited Mr. Boyer here tonight to at least give you the fiscal piece, and give you some statistics regarding some financial and enrollment statistics that make it clear that we do have some potential for some savings. So, Mr. Boyer, welcome. So, Mr. Boyer, welcome.
Thanks. Thank you. As Dr. Otto mentioned, I just pulled together a few statistics, basically, on our current year, where we are with cyber school enrollment and our tuition costs. For January, our total enrollment was 101 students, for both charter and cyber charter schools. The basic difference is charter schools where students actually can visit the building, where cyber charter is where students actually is at home, a laptop, taking classes, it's virtual. Of those 101 students in, for January, nine, five of those students attended cyber school. So six attended charter school. Basically, that was a specific course that, like, an arts academy. To give you a little bit more perspective, in July 2012, we started this this year, we had our enrollment sent in. So we increased our enrollment by 40.37 percent. It's basically the same. Of the 73 student, or students, nine-
May I interrupt you? Said another way, we lost 40 more kids to a cyber school.
Not necessarily. We could have come into another district. We didn't necessarily lose. We didn't gain.
Let me say it another way, we got the bill.
Okay. Just, I just want to, I got to ask Dr. Otto a question. Mr. McCullough recalls, I'm not sure if Mr. Frazier remembers, we used to get a monthly report that listed all the students that we transported that were not part of our district by where they went. So if they went to Calvary, Coventry Christian, it would say six. If they went somewhere else, it would say three. Remember that report?
Yeah.
And we were able to track where, what school systems and/or what other learning institution we were moving, we had Daniel Boone students' attendance. And then that sort of fell off the table, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, I-
I don't ever remember.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that doesn't ring a bell for me.
Yeah. We used to get that on a monthly basis, as part of our enrollment report, that I know Mr. Robbins used to give it to us, and it would say, like I said, and I mean-
Well, you're talking about non-pub transportation?
Yeah, non-public, non-public school transportation.
But we might want it as-
Cyber school. That was part of the number.
Yes.
And we used to be able to see where they were. They said, "Well, how come all of a sudden, you've got three more kids going to Coventry Christian?" And what happened? What institution in the district? But we used to get that.
Well, we can resurrect that. I mean, I'd have to dig that up. I don't recall ever dealing with that myself.
I mean, I'll see if I've got-
Yeah, if you have anything, let me see it.
... one of the boxes, and all the copy of that report. But it was a report that we used to look at all the time, and it was important numbers, told us where they went.
Correct. On a transportation bill, we receive from clients, and it does separate out the students that are attending non-public education, and where we transport them to.
So go ahead.
Should that be possible to provide? Of the 95 students that attended the cyber charter schools, 73 are considered regular ed students, and 22 are considered special ed students. Which is significant, because yearly tuition costs currently paid for a regular ed student is $8,291.56.
Can you say that again? And let me just clarify, that's a number that is generated by the state for us.
That's for special?
That's what they call the tuition rate, but that's what follows a regular ed student out the door.
For a special ed student, the yearly tuition is $16,137.48. So that was, so that being said, if you look at our past budget history for cyber schools and charter schools, 2010, 2011, our budget was $650,000. 2012, 2013, the budget was $790,000.
That's for this year.
Yes.
When he says budget, you mean actuals?
Budget.
Budget.
In the past?
Yes. If we assume that we continue our average of 72 regular ed and 22 special ed students, along with the six students that are attending the regular charter school, we're projecting actual cost to be $900,524.35 for this school.
Because if you remember, when we budget for this, we have to budget on who we know at the time, and that number can grow throughout the year. So that's what he's sharing with you now.
So we're sending every cyber school $8,291.56?
It's prorated, if it's not the full year.
I'm saying it's prorated, but it's-
But that's no, that's just for regular ed. For special ed, it's $16,000.
Okay, but I'm looking at the side right now. And what was the number that we saw last year that we spent per student on average that was in the revenue needle? About $800 or something? About $800, I thought I looked at, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what number you're referring to.
What's the average cost of-
What's the average cost per student? And we're, you know, the lower half of the county, I thought it was like $800 or something.
We just take $53 million and divide it by 3,700 students.
That's close.
Yeah, it's close.
But I guess my point is, we spend almost $900,000 on 100 students?
We have no choice.
I didn't say that, but-
Yes.
They average hired what we pay for our regular students.
About 14 grand.
How much, Andrew?
About $14,000 per student.
That's not right, that, we never, we're not close to that.
Uh, I think it's around 12, maybe.
Huh?
I think it's 12-ish.
Well, this is 53 millions for next year, right? So was our budget this year 50 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, I forget how to do that.
It's out on the website, I'd have to go out.
About 13,000.
Yeah, but the number they put in the paper is different, because they take that money or something else out of it. But again, my point is, we're spending more than it's getting our students in a regular ed building than the cyber schools that were created back in the summer.
Okay. Do you have more information you want to share with us?
Are you going to, all right. My next question was, do you know what the estimated costs are for us to run a cyber school?
That's what we're working on now. It depends on the options we would choose. There's a hybrid of options going on. Some districts are actually earmarking staff to run it, because it becomes that question of who the BCIU offers a program. If you remember when we talked about it back in the fall, that's kind of where we were leaning. So Mrs. Torsia, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Hawes and I are spearheading an effort to get as much research as fast as we can to come up with some options and recommendations for the board to consider.
Wasn't there legislation that, like-
Well, there is legislation pending.
Let me finish that. It doesn't cost, I mean, we pay $8,200 a student, but that's not obviously what they, especially for kids at home doing on a computer.
They get that money.
I know, but right now, isn't there legislation to pay, or-
Yes.
Pay exactly what it costs the cyber school to run the program?
Yes.
Versus that formula, because, let's face it, we're paying $8,200, but they might only actually incur $4,000 for that cyber school to do. They're making, let's say, I don't know, $4,000 a student.
Well, I think what dovetails part of that legislation was that if homeschool offered cyber charter, they had to go with that first.
Okay.
There are a number of proposals out there that could impact, and I had said that before, but I don't think we can wait anymore.
That's right.
They, again, I don't want to be disparaging Harrisburg, but I think they've drugged their feet on this issue of cyber charter reform, and here we are, looking at a million dollars going out of our budget. And again, I'm not opposed to school choice or people having the opportunity to choose. I just think, cost-wise, it needs to be fair, and it needs to be efficient for us, and I don't think it is right now.
And is there also something about PSSA scoring, something being a part of it?
No, that's a whole nother piece of the discussion. My main concern is that we have some equity in the process, and that we try to maximize our taxpayer dollar here locally with whatever we can do, since this isn't, this isn't a $15,000 item anymore. This is seven figures. This is a big number.
Well, I think you have to take into consideration is that, you know, for these children that were our students and now are going to a cyber school, okay, $8,200 went out the door. There's a certain portion of funding that we used to get from the state that will obviously follow them, but we still capture the real estate taxes from those parents.
Correct. Absolutely.
We capture their earned income taxes.
Absolutely.
We capture the per capita tax. I mean, we're capturing a lot of tax from that family. I don't know what the number actually is per student. I'm sure it varies by what house you live in and what your house is assessed at.
Right.
You know, not every student is a loss to the school district that goes somewhere else. It could actually be a revenue gain in some instances.
If they own property in the district.
If they own property in the district, right. Valid point. I think the issue is one of, look, I think cyber schools are here to stay. I think it's a model, it's a competitive model that we need to be prepared to work at, and-
Well, we need to compete better, is what I'm trying to say.
Look, there's a reason why these kids are leaving, and I think that's, as Mr. Semenaro had asked, what are the costs of running a cyber school? I think a bigger question is, why did our kids leave our school in the first place and go somewhere else? And I'm sure there's a variety of reasons for that, and we need to identify what those reasons are, and maybe some of those can be addressed in the bricks-and-sticks model, because maybe they just left for some reason, because they didn't like it here, or they're being, you know, there's an issue with other students.
You have asking?
We do ask. Every time a student leaves the district, according to our policy, they're supposed to fill out a form as to why they're leaving, first that interview of some sort. I don't know if that practice is being followed, but it would be, we should have that included.
But you know what? I can, I know of a student personally, and again, when I go down the road, and I know very well, I know why he left the district, and I know how much better he's doing at the cyber school.
So, there are- Those are the question, hold on, just one second. Those are the questions you have to ask. I think you also have to ask those 95 kids that are going somewhere else, what would it take to bring you back? And maybe they would come back to a bricks-or-sticks model, or maybe they wouldn't, they would come back to a cyber school model, and we should be figuring out what that model should be to entice them to come back to our school as opposed to going somewhere else. And maybe that's another reason that we'd be able to cannibalize other school districts and bring those students to ours as well. So obviously, there's a lot of information I think you guys need to get, so we set up this model appropriately.
Well, I think the cutting edge of the trend now with, at least in the state of Pennsylvania and really across the nation, is this blended approach, where you're seeing a lot on college campuses where students are doing, they're doing a lot of online learning. So that's here to stay. So we have to learn how to compete with it and deal with it.
Sure. I would just, in your, in your work in trying to figure out what the costs are for us to run a cyber, a cyber school, I would also look to see if there's any kind of partnerships that we can be involved with. Instead of us trying to do something, if there's a model out there where we can partner with someone who already knows, who has all the infrastructure set up, who can do it quick and easy and well, you know, we should look at that. I don't know if that exists, or where that would exist, but it's just then-
Especially initially, man, we only have a handful, a pretty big outlay for 10, 15 kids, if that's what we get. If we're using somebody else, and we can build our own infrastructure, or like you said, or repair it dime, then we're sitting at the 40, 50 potential, then we can afford-
We'll do, part of our plan is to provide you with a cost-benefit analysis of what we're looking at, so.
I think you need to, you know, provide the break-even number of students. You talked about a branding mine model that other school districts were adopting or piggybacking on. That was last October, I think you mentioned that. You know, what is the cost of that model, so we're not reinventing the wheel? We did see something recently where there's this share program, I think I forwarded that around, where school districts, there's an initiative in the state of Pennsylvania that school districts can share resources.
Right.
And that's actually actively being encouraged by PDE. So if Exeter's just starting up their cyber charter program, then maybe we can share resources with them in terms of costs, and encourage our students to participate in that cyber charter school if they're not already. I mean, I think the other part is identifying where these kids are going.
Where does that legislation, by the way, where does that stand? Anyone have an idea?
Well, I had sent out, I had sent out the latest that I heard. It should be in your email somewhere.
We actually got something from Houston.
The PSBA has put out, there's a, yeah, there's a gentleman, Ro Buck, I think is his name, has a bill out now that would try to address some of the, some of the fiscal issues that are, there seems to be a consensus that the financing and funding part of the cyber charter system is broken. Not that the cyber charter is a bad thing, but the funding seems to have created some inequities that are falling onto us as local taxpayers and school districts, so.
I think we were at, Dr. Otto and I were at a superintendent's board presence or a meeting last, was it last Thursday?
The 28th of February.
The 28th of February, and Senator Mike Fulmer from Lebanon was there, and he's going to be the chairman of this education.
He's the new chair.
He's the new chair. And one of the things that he wanted to get some feedback on was this whole cyber charter issue. What I got from that meeting was, he's forming a commission, and he was looking for volunteers to sort of have their input on this commission. And I just got the impression that this is, like anything in government, it's going to take a while before any kind of legislation is actually passed, because he's talking about having hearings and getting input, and then you've got to, you know, then you're going to craft the bill, and then it's got to come out, you know, it's going to get introduced to a committee somewhere, and you're going to vote on it, and then it goes out, and the House is going to do their thing, you know. I didn't get the impression that cyber charter funding reform was around the corner. I got the, gave the impression it was on the agenda, and you're probably looking at at least a year or two or-
That's why we need to move forward. We kind of stalled it back in October, and I think school districts are beginning to move forward in spite of what Harrisburg may or may not be doing, so that's what-
Dr. Otto, can you get a, get us a curriculum, but would you like to add something to the curriculum meeting?
Well, we were actually going to recommend that we run it through either curriculum or revenue enhancement. Take your pick.
Well, I can get it.